Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning, Jeff.
How are you? I have struggled with trying to get on my computer. So this is the first time I've had a Zoom by phone. Who's on?
Jeff, I'm here, Jim Moran.
Hi, Jim, how are you?
Good.
Janine Cunningham.
Hi, how are you?
I'm very well, Jeff, how are you?
Well, we.
I think Bill DeMaio is today.
Hi, Bill. We had a dog emergency and I'll tell you, we had to go at about 1:30 up to that Portsmouth facility where you can go at any time, 24 hours a day if you have a dog emergency. And they were very good. So if anyone has a pet, they were good. The one in Portsmouth was great, not the one in Newington, I haven't been to that one. So what do people have for questions? I wish I could see you guys.
Jeff, I missed that comment, could you repeat?
I said, "I wish I could see you guys," but what do people have for questions that I might be able to answer?
My first question was, Jeff, why can't the citizens have some input at the Select Board Agenda, to the extent permitted by law?
I mean, that's a long conversation for, like I said, maybe citizens' concerns when they return, and they're starting to return now. As you guys know, when I was Chair, you know, we had citizens' concerns, but it wasn't during COVID. And JR had citizens' concerns. When we hit that COVID mark, it was really hard to have citizens' concerns via Zoom just because of length of time and everything else. And a lot of other communities, I think a lot of other communities are returning to citizens' concerns on their Zoom. You've got to remember, a lot of other communities have citizens' concerns in the beginning, or they don't have citizens' concerns. And what happened to us was, we were alerted by Town Council that we were starting to vote and discuss on things that came out of citizens' concerns that weren't on the Agenda, and that's breaking the open meeting law.
I can agree with that, and it's important what you just said. But the fact is, if, at a minimum, people had voiced their concerns, shortened to the point, and whether, and if we get into violation of the law, then obviously you couldn't do it. But at least it would establish what's on people's minds.
And I think, we've always done it, I think it's coming back. You know, these have been trying, really trying times. I think Alicia was really, was pretty specific, was going to try to see how they work and try to stay within the confines of the open meeting law. I mean, we got a few complaints, because we started to even like, you know, vote on them at certain times, you know? So we just got a little carried away.
Yep.
That can be corrected, and you can have, you know, you can have citizens' concerns and still, you know, take note of them, you don't have to respond to them at that.
You know what? That's kind of, we toyed with the fact of maybe having people send in their citizens' concerns beforehand so they could be actually noted in the Agenda, and then we could thoroughly discuss them. You know, and maybe limit it to like, five or seven a night, because we usually don't get any more than that. But, I mean, we're working on it. We're definitely working on it. And I think all of us realize, you know, I've never been uncomfortable with citizens' concerns. What happened too is the citizens' concerns grew and they took a long time. So maybe, you know, having five or seven a night, or just limiting them to... I mean, the idea of stating the citizens' concerns and maybe addressing them on a next agenda has merit too. Who said that?
Janine.
Janine, that makes pretty good sense.
Isn't that, Jeff, isn't that kind of what Alicia said on the meeting on Tuesday?
That's what I, absolutely, that's what I said a little earlier. I think Alicia addressed that pretty well.
So I think, I think there was recognition that need to get back to listening to citizens' concerns at the Board of Selectmen Meeting, just trying to come up with some guidelines of how to do it, or when to structure it, so forth and so forth. So, so Jim, I think, I don't know if you attended Tuesday night, but they discussed that pretty much so. And they're all in agreement that it has to, has to return, the citizens' concern section of it, and that, trying to come up with some guidelines that make sense, okay?
I, Bill, I'm glad we're talking about that. Yes, I spent two and a half hours Tuesday night watching. It sort of leads into my second question, that it would appear that the Agenda, there was sort of start times for each subject, the overall time of the meeting could be reduced. It appears the meetings are too long because people are getting off-subject. I believe more control is needed by the Chair, and there's two examples. One being the lock-in dam, for that conversation to go on for an hour was, wasn't good. And when Tim Lamphrey got on and he carried on for more time than necessary. You've got, I value everybody's time as critical in life, and when you're wasting people's time, the only person that can control that is the Chair of the meeting. I believe if you, on the agendas, Jeff, if you, sort of the major issues, sure, put a start time of seven, and the next issue, 7:30, give it, you know, next issue, 7:45. At least it starts with parameters to try to control and let people know what you're trying to do. And obviously, critical issues may overrun, but, but that again, is a case-by-case basis to be controlled by the Chair.
I think that's a good point, Jim, myself.
Now, who's speaking, who was that?
That was Bill DeMaio.
Bill, you know, I think Bill stated really earlier and caught the gist of where we stand, and Alicia articulated it well. Jim, that sounds good on paper, but whenever we try to limit time limits and wrap things up, you kind of miss a few things too. We're going to.
Jeff, I can hear that, but countering that argument is, the Planning Board is a great example of what can be done and is done. They put times on, and they also control their conversations, and I believe they were remarkably efficient, and I think the Select Board could learn from them.
Well, I mean, I'm not going to take an issue when I can't see anyone with that, but I'll tell you what, a Selectmen's meeting is a Selectmen's meeting, and we're trying to return to citizens' concerns. And, you know, I think probably being efficient has merit, but discussion's discussion, and I've never been one to limit it, so that's probably why I'm not Chair now. I mean, my meetings were long, so, but, you know, let us get citizens' concerns out of the way, and then we'll make your meetings shorter, how's that?
Sure, that's great.
So.
I had some more issues, but I just assumed, stand down, let other people talk if they've got some concerns.
I can't, I can't say it again, Jim?
I said, "I've had a few questions." I just assumed, stand aside and let others make some comments of what their concerns might be for today.
Well, don't stop. I mean, we got, the lock-in mill dam, for one thing, is something that we'll thoroughly thrash out, and I think some of the concerns that, once were in place for that action, probably don't exist now. But, you know, so what else are we thinking?
I guess my next question is, why isn't there going to be a town meeting here in the fall?
You know, I really can't answer that right now, beyond the fact that for some reason we don't seem to have enough content to merit one. And that would be a question that I'd probably have to think about a little. And like you said, you've got me on a day when I am exhausted and I'm much sharp at all.
Jeff, I think that's some of the best answers that I've heard, is that when questions are asked and we don't have good answers, it would be best to say, "Hey, I don't have a good answer, but let's, let's figure in the next few weeks what it is." I'm sure I'm not the only one that would have that question. There'd been sort of a standard in the town for years and years of meeting, but I'm moving from there.
I think, I think we'd have to meet outside, and if there's certainly not, if there's certainly not enough content, that's probably the issue, but I can, I can definitely look into that. I'll tell you what, no one really knows, I mean, people want to maybe open Town Hall, people want to maybe open Town Hall, to maybe just us for the meetings, which if we have enough space and I don't care about it, it's so funny. Everyone has different ideas of how serious COVID is. You know, I've taken it kind of seriously because of my age, and yet, you know, I work on the mosh with another guy that has two kids, and we're in the truck together, so I mean, how, how do you know? So, I think, you know, what worked at the high school probably work well again if we do have one, but some towns are even really going to outside. So, let me, let me kind of push forward and find out, you know, why we don't seem to have enough content to merit one, but we'll, we'll find out.
Yep. My, my next question was, what's the current schedule and budget for the new police station? And why wasn't there a report on the annual town meeting on that, or any current information available on the website?
You know, I sit on the, I'm on a lot of the meetings, and I'm following the everyday processing and some of the things that go on throughout the process, or maybe the small things like wire, aren't there four wires in one chase? And do we have to put a string in the chase to pull an extra wire if we need it? So, you know, I never really think about the larger issue. So Jim, I can't answer that. I don't know if it was something that was necessary to do, to be, or I just haven't even thought about it, because I'm kind of caught up in the minutia of the completion of this.
I'm a little surprised, I'm a little surprised with that response, Jeff. You know, the town's voted $8 million, and quite frankly, there's no reporting on what's going on. And on the website, it'd be so easy to say, "Here's our current budget, and here's where we are on schedule," with, you know, a one-page, simple update, to let the people in town know what's going on.
Well, like I said, I haven't thought of it in that way, so.
What's the, what's the plan and schedule for Town Hall? And I, and I know years ago, it was always considered to be a campus site where the Town Hall, or fire station, the police station would all be together, and it just seems that the Town Hall issue has been going around in circles for several years.
Well, I mean, there's been a lot of issues, there's been a lot of ideas put forward, and a lot of those ideas, people didn't like. So, certainly, Newbury has been resistant to building and restoring some of the buildings that need it, from, you know, the highway bond on through. So, we are where we are now. I think the police station will need to be completed. Then we'll head into Town Hall, like we've all said we intend to, and then maybe some of the thinking about the Council on Aging, maybe having a place, you know, in the Town Hall construction. And then in the middle of it, we're still going to have a fire station that's in, you know, kind of small and going to have a need for repair. So, when people look back at the idea of what you just said, Jim, maybe having the campus and putting the buildings all in one, I mean, hindsight says that might have been a pretty good deal, but I suppose we'll get it done. I think the location, you know, now that the police station is there, and the fire station is there, and we have water and sewer, certainly has merit, and it's centrally located, and people seem to like it. So, let's, let's see what the next step is. The next step, I believe, will be, once we get a little further along, I don't know if we'll use some of the present architectural people, but we'll certainly set, we'll head, you know, we'll head into needs assessment and design, and find out where we stand. And we've done some of that work already before, and I don't know how much of that can be resurrected. And I don't mean the police station, Town Hall combination.
Jeff, Janine Cunningham, I was glad to hear you mention the Council on Aging. I think it's essential that we start looking at what we do for them. We are underserving our.
Well, you've got to remember, the Council on Aging was really great for my, you know, my mother, and, was it Alex back then? And, you know, I've been in that facility a lot, and I, over the years, and I certainly know it, and I know that it's not perfect.
Not perfect, there's no privacy.
Oh, I know, I know.
Any discussion of any kind, and as I'm sitting there one day, trying to have a private conversation, the children are looking in the window waving at me. Well, it was kind of cute, but it's not either if I'm a crying woman whose son just beat her up, or whatever that might be.
Oh, absolutely.
We need to, and we need to do it soon, find some way.
Oh, I mean, we need to, we need to, I mean, I have no problem with all these things. If you guys will just give me all the money, I'll build them.
I, I totally agree, I know, it comes down to.
I mean, if, if Newbury wants, I, I've been, in fact, it can get under my skin a little, and I, and I believe everyone needs low taxes. But I mean, I look at, I have friends that are Selectmen in Essex, and I look at how quickly things were built there. I mean, I look at, I mean, it's just, and Newbury's a frugal town, and I'll go along with that. But I mean, you've got to remember, I was the one that pushed so hard for the 6.5, and that was really hard to get. So, if we had addressed some of these things earlier, they would have cost us less. But it seems to be the texture and the history of the town, and that's fine. So, we'll probably head into this long process again, and we'll do the best we can. So, and I do, I have, I have a, and I'm going to ask you guys, with the water and sewer available and the protection of a new police station and emergency services next door, I'm not, I have a, I have the idea that it might be a really good thing to have the Council on Aging as some sort of an annex in the Town Hall building when we get it, when we're building it. What do people think of that?
I think it's a great idea, so long as they're given the space that they need so that they can hold kind of programs that they should be holding.
Jeff, this is, this is, Jim, let me comment on that. It's hard to, you know, I think, respond reasonably until a needs assessment is done, and the Select Board said a month or two ago that they were going to do a needs assessment. And I think when you put those needs assessments together with the town's needs, then it's going to give you an order of magnitude of what space you need, and also, is that building, can that accommodate it? If it can accommodate it, and the parking and everything, it makes sense, then you can move ahead. It seems to me, a critical path at the moment is the needs assessment. Do you know where that might be, and when's it going to be done for the Council on Aging?
I think that's, I think that's specifically well said, Jim. It's easy to be analytical and surgical, but I don't think we were talking in that realm. And I think all those things will start as soon as we can. I mean.
Jeff, let's back up, two months ago.
Everyone has the, I'm not going to.
This came out very clearly, that by the Board, you said a needs assessment is going to be done, and I believe you're hiring the existing architects to do it.
Jim, Jim, I'm not going to give you an answer, I'm not going to speak for the Board. I'm going to give you the same answer. I think definitely it's in process. I can't answer that question. No one's blocking it, and no one seems to be, we're all moving in the same, you know, we're all trying to get everything done too. So, I think definitely not being able to meet is really hampering. Definitely having a little trouble getting, you know, conversations on the same level. But the needs assessment, I mean, certainly is imminent. I can't give any answer if it's going to start tomorrow or the next day. And it's probably a good thing, probably a good thing to put on the Agenda for, for our next meeting.
Exactly, I was just going to suggest that if someone just said at the next meeting that, yeah, the needs assessment has been launched, it's been launched, and we have an expected completion date of whatever it is, people might be.
Makes sense.
It would, the natural iteration of business would be, it was on prior agendas, it should be, continue to be carried on agendas to certain levels, and then not dropped and be reissued as a new agenda item.
We, we've talked that out now, Jim, what's next?
Upper and lower greens, what's, what's the plan for work, major work to be done at those?
I mean, that's actually something that I haven't super-concentrated on right now, or have an answer for. I don't know where James actually stands with the direction that he's gotten. What if, who's on the committee? Is anyone here on that committee for the lower green?
I believe the committee is expanded. I thought they were out of business in June, they spent one year writing the report.
But I was just asking if anyone was on, if anyone was on it, had any idea of what was going on, so.
The last thing.
I don't know what the upper greens, I don't know what else they're doing right now. I know the trees were, you know, I know they've done some drainage, I don't know what they've done.
Hi, Jeff, Leslie Matthews here, as far as the upper green. Hi.
Yep.
The upper green, it was left with, the tree warden was supposed to go in and evaluate the trees, trim or remove what had to be done, and start putting a plan together to replace the trees. That's as far as it got.
Yeah, but didn't, didn't, didn't they do some work around the edge of the pond? And maybe look at the drainage that Fred was so concerned with, that drains to the lower pond? Didn't James do some work on that too?
Yeah, they put the gypsum down.
Yep.
And fertilized.
I got you. So there's still, you know, there's still a lot left to be done if we think about the things that were projected to be done. I suppose it could go on and on and on, but certainly, it's not going to get done this fall, so.
Well, it's still early enough in the season for the trees to be attended to.
Yeah, but they were going to cut some and plant some, right?
Yes.
And none of that worked, and we had, and we had one of our, one of our citizens that was going to donate some really good trees to that facility, to Mike Hathaway stepped forward and said he, you know, early on, would, would plant some pretty good-sized trees there because he has a tree spade and everything. So, it's been so dry, that planting stuff certainly hasn't been on anyone's... I have, I have, my son's a superintendent on the golf course, and certainly this has been a really tough, tough summer and fall for planting stuff. But that's another thing that I, I can certainly check on, and we can ask for an update, so. I'm just kind of writing things down. What else? What else, guys?
Jeff, I have a question. The issue of the PEG money at Triton came up, I thought it was a great discussion. I guess the question is, if the town is struggling with spending, we're taking in $100,000, $150,000 a year from PEG, and the customers are paying 5%, but we can't spend the money, maybe we should think about reducing the rates to the customers in Comcast, rather have them pay 5%, which was just recently increased from four. Maybe it should be reduced to 2%, and we figure out how to spend this money. But I think the more important issue is, and I think you're addressing that, is to figure out a way to get the money to Triton, and my guess is that you're doing that as we speak.
I think, I think what, what makes it hard is I think there needs to be a way for, when we look at upgrades that are needed at Triton for communication, I think the issue becomes, maybe we need to develop a way that all three towns can work towards that, instead of one town maybe giving certain money that could get used for other things than what maybe three towns should be donating for. So, it's going to go out for all three towns' kids. So, and, and that, that gets to be something that I hear from other people. Even our PEG money, our tax money, that they want it to go, you know, for the betterment of the building of the facility, but they don't want to be paying more than their share. And I heard a lot about that during the override with Triton, so.
That's good. What's the status of the lease in Kentway? For some reason, I thought it was expiring this year.
Someone's, I'm having a really hard time, Jim, speaking slowly, someone's speaking in the background, and it's kind of blocking me out, but start again, slow.
What's the status of the lease on Kentway? For some reason, I thought it was expiring here in August. Has that expired, and can you update us on what's going on there?
That would be something that Tracy would do, I know the lease is forthcoming. And then we'll have to probably decide how long the lease to build it again, and, you know, hopefully, for me, Jim, has someone got something on in the background?
I don't know who that is.
It's Barbara, Barbara, can you mute yourself?
Hopefully, office space goes down, Jim. I mean, it seems to be going down every place else, but maybe, you know, we don't have a lot of office space in Newbury, so it could be still at a high priority, but certainly office space is becoming, you know, but we're stuck there for a while, I mean.
I had sent Tracy an email last week asking that question, I haven't heard back.
Yeah, no, it's definitely, it's, we've all heard, your sensitivities are correct, that it's forthcoming. I know she's definitely working on, you know, the terms, and that'll all come before us, so.
On next Wednesday, the Triton Regional School District is having their meeting for their plan, their school plan. Who will attend for the town and report back on that to us?
I mean, I, I had attended a lot of them when they weren't COVID-related. I think Alicia has always been involved in that side of things, and I think Mike's been going to a couple too, so, on the Zoom end of things. So, I attended some of the Zooms, so I haven't stayed right plugged in. I'm sure Alicia still is, and maybe Mike. When they decided to go remote and made a decision, I kind of backed off being on the Zooms.
Yeah, I've been talking to them by email, both Brian and Nerissa, and since the town's kicking in $10 million.
Nerissa, Nerissa is a breath of fresh air, and she's doing a really good job.
Yes, she is.
And Brian, Brian is focused. Aren't they talking about coming back to at least a hybrid system within October? What have you heard? What, what has anyone heard?
That's, that's the reason they're having the meeting next Wednesday, to make that decision. They're fully remote now, and I think that's a big concern for a lot of people. I would like to think some of the town might participate in those discussions, because until we get to the hybrid, the start of a hybrid, we're really spinning our wheels in a dead start.
You know, it's just, it's this, everyone has an opinion, and it's, this, COVID is, is very intricate, it's very agenda-driven, and it's filled with emotion. For example, my son, once again, Nathan, is at Renaissance as a superintendent. They had a meeting, someone went for a COVID test because they didn't feel good from one of those meetings because they had a very large tournament coming in, and it was an operational meeting. because they had a very large tournament coming in, and it was an operational meeting. And the Our Carpet Golf Course, Carpet picked up the fact that one of those people at that meeting of the people that were in charge of running the course and setting up the tournament, went for COVID tests and they closed all those people out of the golf course. And I actually just got as we're speaking, and why it came to my mind, this was two days ago. So in other words, the GM went, the superintendent went, the chef went, a whole of people at the front of the golf course were at that meeting, and they were told not to return to the facility. And I just got a message back as we're speaking from Nathan that the COVID test proved negative. So, the, this whole COVID thing, and it's probably gonna get worse like the experts tell us as we go back inside. And going back inside for old teachers and everything, I mean, it's inside, so I cannot. I, I mean, as much as I'd like to say, we need to go back to school, Immaculate Conception is in school, certainly there's schools that are in school. But you know something, that's a process that people are gonna have to work through. And, and certainly the teachers union has a strong, you know, opinion on it, so. I think, Jim?
Yep.
Continue to listen, we'll see what happens. This is a, this is a, this is, this is a journey with a lot of turns.
Yep, no, I, I'm also realistic.
I would not like to be.
And I understand that the other schools, other schools in the areas are making it work. I understand that Market Basket and Walmart and restaurants allow people in and out. And Triton now is not engaging in face to face where everybody else in society within the twenty mile radius of us is. So it's, it's almost inconceivable that that would be the position. I certainly hope next Wednesday, they say, hey, let's go into hybrid, and that would, that would be a great decision.
And, and, and obviously, I have a grandson that's in Triton, and he's certainly not winning right now. So, you know, in the, in the district, so he's, he's certainly not winning. Education is tough right now if you're not, I think it's tough if you're back in school.
Not only isn't, isn't he winning, he is losing with many of the children, and a remote basis is a killer.
We, we don't even realize the extent of, I mean, I couldn't get on my Zoom meeting this morning. How's that? And I've got a brand new iMac, and that's probably the reason. So.
Yep.
I mean, technology is tough, let alone trying to learn as you sit from it. I suppose people thirty years from now will find that very, much part of their everyday procedures, so.
Well, there are a lot of factors that have to be taken into, you know, and looked at, you know, the building itself and, you know, the com mobility's of the staff that are in there, and there's, there's many, many factors that have to be taken in, so. I really believe they're doing the best they can and looking at what they need to do. So they may need to fix something.
The building, the building certainly, the building is older.
Right.
You know, there's absolutely no doubt about that, so.
You know, do they have the air exchange they need? Do they have?
That's right, that's right.
You know, there's so many things about this that need to be addressed, so.
Yep. It's not, I wouldn't, I would not wanna be a superintendent right now having to make that call. I'd have to really pull on all the people that were giving me information. That's gonna be a tough call.
It is.
I mean, it is gonna be the school committee and the superintendent and everyone involved, but. I mean, this is, anyone that becomes an expert on COVID all of a sudden, it's pretty irresponsible. So, there's a lot of turns in this, 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 uh, this journey. But I think the, I think Wednesday will be an interesting night, James. And, and I gotta, I'll, I will add one more thing. I mean, I did go to Clark for psychology and I picked up a master's in education from Springfield College, and I taught elementary school. And what we're going through right now, you know, certainly middle school, not, not being diminutive about the educational needs of middle schools or high schools. But the kids that right now that are in the elementary section of our school systems, and they're learning the real basics. I mean, I'll tell you what, hopefully their parents are really working hard with them to pull them along. Otherwise, this is gonna be a lost year.
Well, I can tell you that I have two different households of grandchildren, and that's exactly what's happening. And they're, they're managing, they're doing okay, but, you know, it, it's not easy. Try and be careful. Needs to work and educate your kids, you know, so.
Well, where it show, where it shows up, where it shows up is, um, I mean, I was always poor in math, and I seem to have passed the genetic trait right down through. And I mean, everyone in my family reads really well and retains really well, but, I mean, it's really hard to pull up all your, you know, cognitive math skills when you're not working, you know, with a teacher in a classroom. So, it's tough.
Jeff, is there any discussion about paving the parking lot at Manta Field?
There was. I don't, I don't know where that's gone. For people that use it and are buy it, it's been a dry summer, so it probably hasn't been a problem. What happens when there's a lot of rain there? Does that gravel hold or does it hold a lot of water?
Oh, no, the, the gravel is fine. It's, it's a very stable base. It's just that it's, it's dirty and dusty, and I would have thought over time with all the money we're spending on paving roads to, to pave that lot in time, might be a good thought for the, for the near future.
You know what, you know what, Jim? Hold that for citizens' concerns. That's kinda, that's actually kinda good. I don't know the logistics of how taxpayers money, you know, that's a good, that's kind of a good thought, though. Hold that. We're certainly, we're certainly getting a lot of roads done. So, we, we certainly have some of the best roads of any of our towns. Certainly better than High Street right now after the, what happened when they had to grind the lines off. It's, um, I drive a motorcycle, so I'm very aware of roads, and Newbury's done a great job on the roads. And our highway department, once again, the mayor, you know, shows how well they've, they've, they've certainly grown and become proficient at what they do.
Morning, Jeff. It's Jack, right?
Jack, how are you? I'm having a terrible time on my phone. Because I can't, I can't see anyone. You guys have the benefit of probably being able to see each other, so.
Yeah. Oh, the portrait we don't have, the portrait we have of you at our heads, Jeff, suffice us just.
That must be something, yeah. Don't have, don't have a nightmare.
No. First, one thing, I thank you for coming today, under the circumstances. Appreciate your time always. First thing, in regards to the citizens' concerns and town council going backwards a little bit. I don't think the citizens have ever asked for a vote under a citizens' concerns issuance at any of the town, at any of the select board meetings where discussion takes place. So any notion by the town council that actions taken by the select board are pushed by the citizens' concerns, I submit to you what was discussed earlier, and that's a, it's a moderation issue. It's not a citizens' concern issue. I believe great moderation, as has been exhibited both by the planning board, as Jim suggested, as well as Marshall Jesperson of the finance board have both proven that interaction is in the best interests of every citizen. But, and I know you're working towards getting it back on, and I can only say that it wasn't COVID that, that prevented citizens' concerns from moving forward. It was pre-COVID when the decision was made to shut down the citizens', citizens' concerns of COVID. And I just wanna make the distinction that it wasn't COVID that drove citizens' concerns out. It was the select board voting to take it out, and then COVID has been, obviously played a role. But notwithstanding, Jeff, what I'd like to ask you about is the Plum Island bathrooms. And I wanna give it to you this way, Jeff. I think everyone in town agrees that there should be bathrooms at Plum Island in some manner, no doubt. However, when we voted to buy the building that we now own, I don't know necessarily that good messaging was done. And I think that was evident when the select board presented the $220,000 investment to make them bathrooms, which was voted down a year later. So what I'm asking you is this. Recently, the town administrator spent the $40,000 that Lenny Mira had raised through the state as grant money towards that end. But the problem for me, Jeff, is that the citizens voted down and sent the select board and town leadership back to the drawing board in regards to the $220,000 investment. Yet we're a year later, no further vote has been taken place. But we're moving forward with the same build out that voters rejected summarily less than a year ago. And voters haven't been asked subsequently about a build out. But yet the build out is going forward that the voters rejected, and I'm asking what your opinion on that is.
My opinion is probably not as intricately interwoven in the interaction between how we got to the point. I mean, I guess the point we're at now is, once again, we have one of our highway department people that have a contractor's license, and we're working towards finishing off the inside.
But that was.
I always, I always went along with the purchase of the bathrooms because I'm involved a little bit at a different level, Jack, with, you know, what goes on at Plum Island as far as resources for state and federal for sand renarishment and emergency femur and all the other things. And just like Salisbury's going forward and putting in their bathrooms. When you start to, you know, with the public trust, when you, and, and Plum Island is a little different anyway with the colonial ordinance and the ownership of property to low tide, you know, there's five low tide water, you know, water states, and we happen to be one of them. And, you know, services have to be kind of provided. People need to be able to reach the water, whether you're going up on the side where the annizements occur from the beach renarishment, or if you're going on private property to the south. Otherwise, you're not gonna get any money for, you know, from, from the federal government or the state. Because you have to have access to the water. It's the public trust. And part of the things with the bathroom for me always was that not only do the businesses want that, but it's also extending the use of allowing people have the facilities and maybe having a room where if we ever get lifeguards again and all that stuff, we can have them, so. I mean, the, the idea and concept, at least for me, seemed okay.
And, and, and I agree with that. Every premise you've said, Jeff, is agreeable to, I think, every person in town. But what the town, what administration has done is we've voted specifically not to go forward with the project.
No, we voted, we voted not to spend the money.
Right. So.
That doesn't mean not to go forward with the project. We voted not to spend that amount of money.
Well, right, which means in effect, we were sending you back to the drawing board. We didn't say, oh, you can do the same project cheaper, for in fact, if that's what you're proposing, it should be re-proposed as a votable item at town meeting, as was the original 220. So I don't understand yet how the citizens have been disenfranchised from the vote that we said, no, we don't wanna spend 220, and maybe we don't wanna spend that much on the building in general. The other, the other thing that came forth this summer, Jeff, very clearly with the deluge rains, and a picture's provided to the world by Dave Williamson, the former owner, as you know, was that the building, although it may be dry on the inside, clearly floods around it. And going forward, the notion that, hey, it stays dry on the inside if we keep the doors closed is, you know, leads the town, again, as part of the vote down, can be interpreted as the 220. The citizens want a real, a real, let's call it, needs assessment. We know everybody wants to poop and, and shit around, you know, at the, at the island. We understand what the public demands. We understand what the islanders need, as I would want to if I, if I was out there and had the need. But I also think that the town, without a good needs assessment, is clearly investing $220,000 on top of $350,000, on top of the $40,000 Lenny just, you know, arranged for us. And we're nearly at, you know, that, that puts us over $600,000 for a building shown this summer to flood and.
Well, hold, hold it, hold it, you know, some of that money that you're speaking about would have definitely been labor. So the cost of refurbishing and putting in what's needed to make the building functionable is not gonna be that expensive because certainly it was labor involved in its prevailing rate, so.
Well, then, Jeff.
And we, we don't, we don't have that now.
Right, because we voted, yeah.
That certainly, that certainly can be something that, you know, we address again. I mean, if this town, we certainly can, we certainly can vote again to see if the town wants to stop putting in the bathrooms on Plum Island. But I think that would be a great vote at town meetings, Jack. I'll make sure they get on again.
No, I appreciate that because it just seemed we were following a good process. We purchased it.
Why don't we, why don't we just take and, before we belabor the fact, we'll put it up for a vote again, you know, and see if they wanna stop, you know, trying to refurbish the, uh, the building on Plum Island with, with the reduced, with the reduced rate of being able to get to the goals.
Right, but that should have been presented upfront before you, you know, the, the board has already authorized $40,000 of, of, and spent Lenny Mira's money on the interior fixtures.
The money, the money, the money needed to be spent by a certain time, and that certainly was probably part of what was spent, so.
But Jeff, it was eighteen months from the voters' rejection of the 220. Nothing was done, and eighteen months later, you guys went back to the same plan and started purchasing it, purchasing for it. The eighteen months prior should have been the discussion of, okay, what do we want to do with the building in light of the fact that voters don't want to do this? But now we're already into it. You, you're already purchasing for it. But I appreciate, Jeff, first off, thank you, and I will appreciate more so.
I'm fine, I'm fine, I'm fine with, with where you're driving.
Yeah.
You know, I think, I, it's so funny. I look at progress as progress, and sometimes I probably forget the perception, so this is, this is good for me too. So I'm okay with it.
No, and I appreciate it. And Jeff, I, you know, I say to you that I appreciate all that's done. I only mention it because it seems like we got away from the process that was going forward.
Trust me, this is, this is, this is why we have these sandy meetings, and, you know, sometimes I suppose I get caught up in forward motion. And I, I don't perceive some of the intricacies that you're talking about and some of the things Jim said that was good. So, you know, I've written down some stuff. I don't have a problem at all. So don't apologize, you know, this is good. I can understand, I can definitely understand. You know, I can understand that it's funny if you're, if you're, if you're against something, it, it seems that, you know, sometimes the, um, the process is not obvious. If you're for it, then it's fine to move in that direction, so. Clarity, clarity, we should probably provide more clarity on how the bathrooms are gonna be finished up. And if people don't wanna finish them, and they want us to sell the building, and they wanna vote that at town meeting, so be it.
It, it's, it's just, again, it's just honoring the process, and we just seem to, we just seem to have walked away with it. And I think the town should be proud, the town administrator and yourselves, that if you can come back with that same 220 plan and say, hey, we're gonna do it for 125, you wanna vote on that, fine. But to go about it with purchasing and using the plan as the, as the springboard to the development of the building, which was. to the development of the building, which was, you know, which was asked to be reviewed and hasn't been beyond the fact that we're going to do it cheaper. You know, I, I think, thank you very much, bringing it to the voter, even though we're already started into it, is very important because, um-
Well, I mean, it would be, it would be perfect if we could, you know, put the bathrooms someplace on Plum Island that was safer and still have access for beach people.
And it seemed that high point across-
You know, it's hard, it's hard. The building seemed to make sense because of the zone it was in. It seemed to make sense because, one thing, if, if anything, that building can stand a little water going through it. Because of the design of it, uh, it seemed that it would provide some, some relief for where we needed to go for, for the long-term projections. But like I said, for me, I will go along with what the town wants. If the town wants to take and negate the process on the building and they want to come to a vote at town meeting on what we need to do with it and they want to put it up for sale, fine.
I think it's, Jeff, I think it's as much, I think we all want the same thing and that's to provide that service out there. I just think that, you know, other people have considered too, the area directly across from Addy Mays that we own, on the high ground, on the beach side, seems to be a smarter location than does in fact the crossing of the street in a low water, clearly flood zone, that's noted flood zone area, which this summer, again-
Now, now, now we're getting into a lot of some of the things that we've gone through over and over and over.
Right.
Town meeting, town meeting, town meeting voted to buy the building. It just seemed, you know, to us kind of important to finish the building because they voted to buy it. If you guys want to sell the building, and, um, we'll do it. I have, I have no problem going back there. You know, it's after a point, people get tired of, of, of a process, but it's fine.
No, I, 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 we, we all live the arguments back and forth. I think the clear, I think one of the overriding things, Jeff, that we're talking about here, citizens' concerns and all of the issues that we talked about here today, is, is it's about messaging. You know, whether it's getting it on the town website, whether it's putting it out there through your own methods of social media or however. But clearly, message, limited messaging to the preponderance of citizens, through no fault of anybody's, you know, is, is part of the issue that says why we end up in a situation that could possibly harm us in the future. Again, through messaging, yes, that's a nice building, et cetera. But by the same token, there are, you know, I think at the same time, other messages could have been brought forth. But first, I, I'll end it with that, Jeff. I think it's awesome that you've taken the messages and I would very much look forward to this being brought forth at a selectman's meeting, that in some way, shape or form, the budget to come for that building can be outlined so in some way, citizens can know exactly what's going on there. Not just, we're going to do it, it's going to be cheaper because we have, you know, an inside highway department, G C guy, who's also a dam taker downer, a tree guy, a bathroom builder, an asphalt layer, and et cetera, the other responsibilities-
Jack, Jack, I understand that. Don't make, don't make, don't make fun of that though because it's, it's really, it's, um, it's saved us a lot of money in, in the efficiency of the highway department. You know, some of, our departments were underfunded and, and under, and had poor facilities for a very long time. And, you know, whatever, don't ever, you know, don't ever belittle the fact of what they do because it's amazing from police to highway.
No, no.
They, they, they work, and I, and I, and our employees in town hall, you know. I mean, we're not triple A, bond rated for nothing, so. I mean, there's a lot of good things that the town is doing, trust me.
No, I, I, that's not what the comment was about, Jeff. The comment was more about we spread a lot on that highway department, you know, and I understand this way-
But I'm just, I'm just saying, some of the stuff that they do now with the bucket trucks, you know, and now the lights and so, everyone's moving, everyone's trying. It's funny, everyone's trying to do a good job. And, you know, it, it'll all take in, it'll all come out in the wash, you know. And we'll, um, some of the questions that everyone has had today, if people want more clarity, we'll do our best, you know, during these times and everyone's busy and it, it's sometimes a little odd. I mean, is ClearGov giving anyone any more information, Jim? Is that working?
I would say it's working well. It took a while to get there, but now, uh, that's my feedback. I think Tony has followed that pretty closely for some time.
Yep, alright, so, I mean, one thing is, getting everything out is, is a major job too, uh, Jack, so.
Yep.
But it's, um, it's just a lot of moving pieces. So, and when it gets down into that minutia, especially for a guy like myself, you know, that wasn't, like I said, on the, my, my broader perspective on getting bathrooms in was probably for a different reason. It was for the benefit of the people, but also for the benefit, you know, of trying to fulfill a need. Some of the ways that we got there, I probably didn't totally focus on, so. But what you just said certainly makes merit, has, you know, what's next?
It's, uh, 10 o'clock, Jeff, and you probably need some rest after your dog adventure last-
I, 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 if there's some other things that people want to talk about, I'm fine. So I don't know if I'm helping or hurting, but, you know, it's, uh, it's certainly, for, for a guy like me that has been a selectman for a while and provides probably a historic view of where we've been and certainly, you know, where we're going to, things are evolving out of a stage where we were 900 grand in the, in the red. You know, and guys are outside fixing equipment in the parking lot of a highway bond and people were donating services to put shingles on town hall. I mean, I don't know, I don't know how, like, probably I went wrong because I've been a selectman for a long time. I don't know how we could have instilled a different ethic in our community that public servants and people that work for the town and that our facilities were getting old. I wish we could have started a decade ago to start to fix some of our old buildings and spaced it out. But we're, we've got some buildings, you know, and they're starting, you know, we have a new police station, so we're working in the right direction. But it, it, it's been a long haul.
Well, I think, you know, Jack said it, messaging and how we communicate is probably the, the key that begins to get some of that out there. I mean, it, it's, it's ridiculous to think that we can't maintain buildings. We have to maintain our home. Why aren't we maintaining town property like we do our homes? We just have to mess it the right way.
There were times, Leslie, where honestly, with deferred maintenance, was it Jeanine, sorry, I wish I could see you guys. There were times, and you remember this, where we didn't have money to paint the buildings.
Exactly.
So, I mean, and the buildings, like anything else, and I'm pretty frugal and you got to remember, I built my own house, so I didn't fall off the turnip wagon. You know, they do, they do get old. They do outlive size-wise, facility-wise. I mean, not only OSHA, but, you know, handicap, it's tremendous what the state mandate is for public buildings.
Yep.
So, and other towns have been replacing them, you know, in advance and we're getting to it now and it's costly. But at least money's, right now, we can borrow money pretty cheaply, so, who knows? Who else?
I'm gonna, uh, I have a quick question, Jeff. You suggested that-
Is this, is this Leslie now?
Yes, yes, it is.
Yes, go ahead.
Jim brought up, um, something and you suggested that it be discussed during citizens' concerns. Should he apply to have that put on the agenda? Because the way I understand, the only things that can be discussed in the citizens' concerns during the meetings are things that are on the agenda.
That's, that's evolving and Alicia and I and J R are working on that. So I'm going to give you the answer, Leslie, that I think it would be good to put that forward. To, that's my phone, guys, let me just see if I can get that. Alright, um, so, I think probably that's the way to do it now. And I think what we're going to try to do is make sure where sometimes we noted those things, we're going to try to read them and discuss them. So, once again, that's my view of where we're going. So, um, I think that would be good.
Should the approach for the bathrooms be the same thing so we can get an updated, dollar amount for the, what, since the highway department will be doing the work and it looks like we'll be spending less money than the 220, could we, in the near future, look for something that will give us a better estimate on what it would cost as far as, you know, won't have labor cost anymore, but it'll have material costs?
Let me take and, um, let me take and, I don't know if I'm going to be asking Tracy on that, but let me take and dig into where that stands. And I think that we can provide some clarity to that. I have no problem, um, putting some things, you know, I'm, I'm trying to articulate how that budget's going to go because I don't know how it's going. I don't know how they're budgeting highway time as opposed to, you know, are they going, when do we buy, let's say, appliances? So, yeah, I, I have no problem. I didn't, I don't know if people have thought that far ahead, but I'm sure they have. But that's, I can't give you that answer, Les. But let's take and, let's take and, um, let me find out. Let me find out if, if that, at a point where it can be articulated and presented. And I'm sure, I'm sure it can.
Yes, Jeanine, I have a question about that. If the highway personnel is working on this bathroom, which we voted down, then are they missing out on doing something else in town that needs to be done?
Supposedly, the way that works is the work is being done, you know, and I know people say, well, if they have free time, why don't we get rid of them? Well, because if you get rid of them and we do have a snowstorm, you need them. So supposedly, what we're doing is, when they have the ability to utilize the time to do something like that, they're doing it during time when they're not busy at that point. I mean, obviously, you know, with anything from fire to police, you know, all our emergency services and all the services of the town, you know, they're not like, you know, pounding the pavement or, there's certainly times when it's not as busy as other times. And these people have, have the ability instead of supposed to sit, they want to go work. So.
A quick one, Jeff, uh, Jack again. In regards to the labor side of it, it, it would be, to say there's going to be savings versus showing savings, I think is real important. Because, you know, I understand, you know, that the highway department versus real skilled labor, no offense to our, you know, to our highway department, but clearly, underground plumbing, electricity, tile, mason we work, that's a lot of skilled work. And in that vein, Jeff, to know that we are savings and it'll be, that it'll be a, a wonderful job for, and, you know, for all of us to be proud of without licensed work done. The licensed general contractor doesn't make him a licensed mason, doesn't make him a licensed tile guy.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure, Jack, you know, obviously, when it goes to have to, you know, do the plumbing and wiring, you know, that is, that's probably, that's probably prevailing ways, so.
Right, so that's why it's in-
Let me, let me, let me find out exactly what the plan is for that because where you've been thinking about it, I haven't been.
I, I, it only came up because when I asked Tracy about this a few weeks ago and she forwarded me the expenditures and where it stands to date, I was very curious as to, again, putting, putting real money on top of said money makes a difference for the voter, you know? Because at the end of the day, there is a lot of skilled labor involved that you can't, you can't bypass, you know? And to that end, how much are we actually saving by taking our highway department people away from something they could be doing in their, in their wheelhouse versus doing a build out for, you know, for the town that's, you know, that's, um, still, you know, still very needed. But at the same time, you know, there's also the time schedules and everything that gets involved. So I think it's all very important for the voter to know that we aren't just going to do this over two or three years and when they have a few minutes, we'll be over there and we'll do a week at a time.
Well, no, that definitely, definitely, you know, the process will probably take longer and definitely, I mean, all you said is true. I mean, getting, getting a way, getting a way forward and, um, and like putting it on paper and, um, we'll take it to town meeting. You guys can vote it up or down.
I appreciate that. It, it's just, I think that should be for everything we do in town, in fact, you know? It's, it's why that, it's why the red building at, at Central Street Fields doesn't have a handicap bathroom and why we have to put a porta john out there, you know, every time there's a real public event because the building was built without, you know, without consideration for handicapped access. And now we'll forever be having money on-
Everything, everything after the fact is, is easy to talk about, but if you don't have-
Jeff, that was discussed ahead. That stuff was discussed with Warren and me, that just-
If we don't, if we don't, Jack, if we don't have the money to do it, people try to bring some of the things forward and those were a lot of volunteers working on that whole process at, at, at the field, so.
But without a plan, Jeff, that's the thing. It went without a plan and the bottom line is, we're without a handicap bathroom in a brand-new facility. And that's embarrassing. I don't care how much volunteer work is involved. The fact is that, you know, to miss a handicap bathroom in the year 2016 is, you know, I, I say to you that that's, that's not a miss, that's a, that's, that's more than it is.
I have, I have a sense, you know, we'll have to have one at a certain point anyway because those, those, you know, the handicap needs are something that, that have to be met anyway. So that'll probably have to be addressed.
Retroactive.
I just get tired when good people try to do a lot of good work and no matter what, there's always something wrong, but it's fine.
Jeff, I've been with you. I, I've appeared before you since 2000 when you were on the planning board. We've both walked this walk before. And there's going forward and then there's plowing forward. And going forward with a process plan is what we need to do, not plow forward and then go back and fix-
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, Jack. If, if you reach this place or you get on the planning board or you're involved in these type of issues, it, it's a different, it's a different story when you're trying to, you know, get them done with what you have done and what you have available. So, when you get on this side, if you become a selectman or you do take the time to get on a concom or, or get involved on the planning board, then, you know, I'm sure Leslie can, 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 can tell you that, you know, there is a learning curve and you do your best, but you make decisions and at that time, you think they're a good decision, so.
But, but true, Jeff, but without process, if Leslie's planning board had had review, perhaps they would have picked that off. But instead, they're plowing forward. If, you know, if-
It's, it's, it's just, a perfect example is, you know, it's been hard for the golf facility. And the golf facility, everyone had, you know, everyone's done the very best they can on it. But there's things that occur in the pathways forward that don't always go the way you expect.
But you got to start with a good plan, Jeff. You got to just start with a good plan, period, but, and that's what's not happening. We're plowing, not planning, and that's different.
Start with a good plan and follow it, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Amen.
Yeah, yeah. Well, Jeanine's talking about the golf course.
No, I think she's talking about a lot of things too.
Yes, I am, talking about a lot of things. Yes, yep.
Well, you know, it's, it's, that, that was definitely a learning curve, you know? I don't think anyone, except probably the folks that live right there, realized what a tough sight that was, you know? So.
Jeff.
What else? Who was that?
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate all the- Yeah, I, 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 I appreciate all the volunteers in town, Jeff. You know, it's right, the reason why we met way back when, when we were, when I was fighting to put lights up at Martha Pearson, and we know how that went, all right? And that's how I got involved 25 years ago. And to this day, the lights are sitting up there, not being used after being used once, when we raised $50,000 and volunteers put it up, you know? So I say to you that process is very important, and to not honor process will blow up in everybody's face eventually, and that's just a fact.
Yep. So, and the problem is, things, I mean, it, it's tough. Because when you have limited resources, and you take a different direction, and volunteers step forward, you still think you have plenty of process, and you still think you're doing the right thing, but sometimes afterwards, you can see where some of the advanced thinking could've been different.
And going forward, that's all we're asking, Jeff, you know? I think all of us just look for fulfillment of an existing plan and not plowing. And I very much appreciate that. I think it's, you know, whether it's the, whether it's the town hall to come, the council of aging to come, the amalgamation of whatever village or separate buildings we create, there certainly needs to be a, a process honored.
I mean, the process, as the process goes forward, sometimes seem adequate. I gotta be honest with you, um. Like I said, when you're involved at, at a level, you know, such as certain people are, I mean, I see, for instance, the police station that, you know, is going extremely well, but when you get down into things that are in a police station, you can have the most intricate set of drawings in the world, and the highest set of architectural plans, and the most intricate process and planning, and it, and it, things don't always pull forward in exactly what you expect either. It's just, it's just the way it is.
Yeah, that's true. And you have a lot of hiccups that happen. I was involved in, in building a new OR, you know, in, um, when I was the director, and little things come up, but you have to start with that really good plan, and keep your eye on it, watch it, make sure, and then when things come up, you need to work it and talk it and, and, you know, make sure that, you know, there's nothing else there if you can, if you can prevent that, so.
Yeah, and it gets, it gets to be, these day, I mean, obviously, when the original Grange Hall was built, I mean, the one where town hall is, you know, a set of plans was a set of plans. Well, a set of plans today is a set of plans. I'll tell you, they're very different. And there's so many different levels from, you know, all the things that, I mean, and this new, the new building requirements, you know, when you're building to 100 mile an hour wind, and on and on and on, the energy requirements. I have been actually enlightened by being part of, you know, watching what's going on in the construction of the police station, and, you know, how you got against, you know, vapor barriers, water barriers. I mean, I'm a little bit of the other side of the school, and I, I'd like to be able to open my window and not have to worry about air exchanges, but, you know, the codes now are at a level that are beyond belief, so. Anyone else have anything maybe different? And I have, I, trust me, I've written some notes, and, you know, it's made me think, oh, maybe a little bit different, guys. It's been good for me, cuz it's made me maybe think a little bit different about, like Jack said earlier, maybe not the process, but the underpinnings of the process. I probably have a tendency to look at the goals instead of how we get to them. So, I've learned a little bit today, too, so it's good.
Well, I just wanna thank you for taking the time to, to share what you, you do know, and to listen to us, and it's greatly appreciated, so, thank you, Jeff.
Trust me, I am not, I am not shocked today. And it really shows, but, um, I'm, you know, I happened to get caught up in that flood coming home at 2:30 last night, and it was, it was tough driving, and it's only Portsmouth, so I'm not that bright. But I want you to know that I, I really, really think that the town is a good town. I think we've accomplished a lot going forward. I don't see huge agendas, and for myself, that's always been important. I mean, I can remember back when, well, I don't mean when I was chair, but I can remember back when I was chair, that one of the main complaints we had, that we always voted the same. And I think people thought that we were breaking the open meeting law. Well, the reason we voted the same is, we usually get a good presentation of material, and that presentation of material is such that, you know, there's one or two conclusions, and usually the conclusion that the board of selectmen tries to make is what's best for the town. So, maybe for me now, I'll try to slow things down and look at the process a little more, and maybe make the process at a meeting, after listening to some of the comment today, I'll try to get to the underpinnings of the process and try to make that process more, more, um, transparent. I mean, like what Jack was saying to me about, you know, the money used, and, you know, how is it gonna be ultimately done with electricians and plumbers? I don't have a problem with that, so, um, it might be best to do that. Instead of the plowing, it might be best to do that right at the time, but I think, you know, I have no problem with that discussion, right at the time. But remember, the board, and I think all the people involved in all of our departments, and all of, um, any of the people that work for the town, they're still trying to do what's best for the town.
Jeff, I don't think anyone.
If I only had, uh, 10 other questions, I don't know if you wanna stay on, or you wanna. I'm, and I'm not joking, I say 10, I'll be, I'll be glad to spend the next 10 minutes, go ahead.
Jim, hold on, hold on for one minute. You guys talk to yourself, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit the head, and I'll be right back, alright?
Jack, welcome back.
Hi, Jim, how you doing? Thanks.
How was the, how was the hike?
Yeah, it was epic, um, phenomenal in all its glory that you would expect the wilderness to bring you. I had to hike off short because I broke my foot in at least three places, so.
Huh.
Yeah.
Did you have enough long, long underwear?
Yeah, you had to carry for 50 degrees. It was 30 at night, and during the day, it was upper 80s, so it was, uh, it was very unique. I, you know, I, I can only say that, um, a lot of people on the trail, a lot of young women on the trail, I was thoroughly impressed with, walking the Appalachian Trail end to end, or walking the Long Trail end to end. Um, it was, um, it, it, it's a, it's an incredible world in the woods, and I can tell you that, um, that there's a lot to be said for decompressing and coming back, that's for sure.
Where, where were you when you broke your foot? How far along?
I don't know, because it got, it, it was an ache that never went away. I, I don't remember specifically.
Alright, I'm back, you guys gotta stop.
Okay.
Alright, go ahead, what we, what we.
Alright, here's, here's my first.
Couple, couple of more things, and I am gonna get some breakfast, go ahead.
Yeah, sure, join in, get your bananas and cereal out, and fry up the eggs. Uh, what's the town doing briefly on controlling the rats at the new police station? Is there an active program underway?
I mean, uh, Board of Health kind of led that, and I think they're doing a good job. I think the problem's become that it has to be something that is initiated with an overall plan within the community, as I look back to that selectmen's meeting, where people go forward and provide their own control, and then they can build a town if they'd like, and it'll go probably to our insurance company. But it's, the, the, the problems with like, towns going into everyone's yacht and, and, and controlling rats, and then having, if there was a problem with someone's dog, or the cat, or so, you know, it, it's, I don't think the town has ever not, and well, once again, it's taxpayers' money, we gotta prove it was our fault and not National Grid's fault, because we don't own it, but that's what we have insurance for, so. I think if people control, they've waited a lo-, it's time to get going, because rats are gonna be going inside. Rats, rats, rats actually repopulate every 21 days. So, you do wanna have a control plan in place in every single yacht, if you're seeing rats.
If, Jeff, if in fact, the source is the police station and the dump under, it would seem to me, a critical issue would be putting the bed, getting that rat population under the building, under control. So that's where I'm going with that question.
Well, the only thing is, as much, as much as I, you know, the rats certainly weren't living in the live peat, and the rest is all gone. And I remember you talking to a marsh guy, so it was probably the, the vegetation, if it came from the police station, and, you know, I'm not saying it didn't, but it was probably the, the actual forested, vegetated part that allowed for the homes, because when you get down into live peat, it's, it's too mobile and too wet. But, um, you know, that's, I think, the Board of Health, I think, is doing a good job, and I'm certainly not gonna take and, and speak on one of our other departments, because my knowledge is not what the Board of Health's knowledge is in a situation like this, Jim.
Uh, next question. The financial presentation by Marshall was, was well-done this week. I didn't quite pick up on it all. Do you know if he's gonna put that in the website, so I could take a look at that?
I mean, why don't we, um, why don't you try to, um, you know, get ahold of Marshall and ask him? I don't think anyone has a problem with, unless there's a spatial problem. I don't think anyone has a problem. And I think that would be good to maybe do again at, uh, town meeting, so that people, once we have the ability to do that, we could see it again. Um, nothing, nothing, I suppose there's parts of that that look rosy, but every, you know, we have a town, we have a town that does not really have, and I think that's what makes the town nice in a lot of ways, cuz it's remaining rural and has a lot of open space, but we don't have water and sewer, we don't have a commercial or a viable retail component to a large scale, so. Certainly, going forward, you know, costs could be a burden on how do we meet those costs, when it's on the back of, uh, houses and homeowners and whatever little business we do have.
Yep. One of the things that maybe I missed it was the revenue side of that equation. It seemed to only talk about cost, and the total equation includes revenue, where that's coming from, and what's happened, and, you know, the issue of 2.5% over 40 years, um, it was a little ambiguous to me, that's why I asked.
Well, I mean, those, um, those internal projections with 2.5 and everything else, but I mean, Jim, ask yourself, you know, how do we pay for things in this town? What, what, where do our taxes come from? You know, we certainly don't have a, a Walmart, or, or, you know, probably, I'm, I'm trying to think of probably what some of our largest taxes, you know, taxpayers are. I mean, is it the marinas? What do we got, the, you know, Palm Island certainly pays high property values, we're getting some larger homes, and they're paying, uh, into the tax base, but, you know, at a certain point.
Jeff, the answer to that question is, is easy.
And less state mandates, you know, more, more state mandates, I mean.
The answer to that question is easy in that we all know that real estate pays the vast majority of the taxes.
Oh, absolutely.
And in businesses, although we preach the gospel that we wanna be business-friendly, when you get into trying to get businesses established, it seems to be almost an unfriendly process by the town in doing so. Uh, and that's only by observation of the more recent businesses that are trying to get established, so, um.
Now, I, I don't, I don't see that. I just see the emphasis on, I mean, I just see the emphasis on, um, people trying to meet the critical, you know, code and infrastructure, um, overlays that are out there. I mean, I think the planning board, let's say, on most development, on when it comes to them, is, is very fair. I think the building inspector and CONCON, I mean, I, I, I think they just try to follow the letter of the law, because we have, what happens in a town like ours, Jim, and you know this because of your prior business, unless you're gonna knock something down, a lot of the very good land in that town has been already used. And when you start to get into stuff that doesn't perk and doesn't drain, so, you know, building in our town, certainly we have, you know, agricultural land that will, will be developed coming forward. So, you know, we haven't met some of the huge expenses that some other towns have met when you have to rebuild your school buildings and everything else, so, um, you know, Marshall, Marshall had, he focused on, on costs, so.
Uh, this leads into another question. On the plan, what is the town's plan for the unfun-, unfunded liabilities? I know I've asked Marshall this at some of the town meetings in the past. I don't believe anybody's got a good answer for that. And of course, this would be another reason why there would be a fall meeting, to see if there's any progress. We're not, we're, and we're talking millions of dollars here of unfunded liabilities. Um, it seems to be a, a big issue and a black hole with not good answers.
Well, you, you got another one with me.
Yep, so, it sort of leads into, it sort of leads into why there wasn't a, a special town meeting in the fall, and it would seem to me that would be a select board decision. It was made, but without much explanation as to why that was.
And I, and I, and I do feel that my answer to that would be that content wasn't, uh, didn't mandate that we needed it, but let's, that's my answer, so it's not divorcey.
Jeff, that could be your answer today, and I appreciate that, but the fact is that the board and, and the, and the total board should be telling that to the public, uh, and explain to them why it's not necessary.
Yep.
The, I had asked Martha Taylor in the spring about, she was gonna issue the town master plan, and I believe this is a 10-year plan, and she says was in process. Do you know anything more about that?
I think, you know, I was very aware of the master plans years ago, when I was involved with the planning board, and Leslie can probably speak to it if she's still there. I think it's a five-year plan, I think it has to be updated every five years.
Right.
Go ahead, Les, are you there?
It has, um, yeah, the master plan is outdated at this point.
Yep.
We're trying to formulate some information and sit down as a master plan committee, and, um, see if we can bring it up to date.
Leslie, are you getting good?
Do you have any idea when that's gonna happen?
Are you getting good citizens' response to getting the committee together?
Um, there is a committee that's already in place. Um, I'm on the committee, and I have not, we have not had a meeting since I've been.
Does it have, does it have any, does it have the depth, I mean, you've got four, five, eight people?
Yeah, yes.
Good, 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 so that's important, that's important, good.
There is so much right now going on with the planning board that, um, I mean, our, our, we, we just have so much in front of us right now.
You know something, Leslie, I gotta be honest with you. I have been on the planning board, I've been involved. I think Martha does a great job, I think you all do a great job, I think Peter's doing a good job. And I kinda went down a little bit, and I realize, you, you guys are really busy.
Really busy.
Really busy. So, but, be that as it may, we'll soon see some, some new development, and, uh, that's the way it's gonna be, but you guys are busy. Alright, I'm getting tired, guys. Alright, I'm getting tired, guys. Anything real, real important? That, not that, nothing, every-